We are meeting via Zoom as we continue to socially distance under the Governor's Executive Order 2020-04, Section 8, and Emergency Order 12, Section 3. Mr. Guarino, could you please call the roll?
Sure. Mr. Guarino is here. Ms. Johnson?
Present.
Ms. Ziem has not yet joined us, okay. Ms. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Gilio?
Here.
Ms. Raymond?
Got it, here.
Ms. Brown?
Here.
Ms. Odin?
Here.
Ms. Timmons?
Here.
We have a quorum. Dr. Mosley?
Yep.
Mr. Donovan?
Here.
Ms. O'Gara is here. Ms. Kinsella?
Here.
We have Ms. Bernado with us.
Here.
And we have also Mr. Gao.
Here.
And I believe I got everybody. We have a quorum.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Guarino. So this evening, the first thing we have on our agenda is the question of a contract approval for Attorney Bennett, which I failed to print out and put right in front of me. Dr. Mosley, did you want to speak to that at all? I think we're all aware of the purpose of hiring a little bit of extra legal staff, but...
I don't have... Sorry, I'm sorry.
Nope.
I don't have any more to add than what I shared with the board before. Certainly, we would appreciate his services. I think at the last meeting, we were, I think it was just a late meeting, so people needed some time to review the contract. I know Dan Donovan has been in contact with Attorney Bennett, and so his services would be much appreciated. That's all I have to add. Excuse me.
Okay. Thank you. Did anyone else have any comments or questions? Mr. Donovan, go ahead.
Yes. This is an agreement that we're... It's an experimental agreement, let's say. It's for six months. It's $5,000 a month, which effectively gives us about 25 hours a month of the time of the law firm of Wadley, Starr &amp; Peters. Mr. Bennett will be the main attorney on most of these things, on any issues brought forward. But there are other sources there if necessary. And so we're going to try to work through the six months. If at any time one party feels that they're not getting value, then we can readjust this. You know, starting off something brand new with an estimate of 25 hours, we think it'll work based upon the current issues. But if three or four months later, that goes up or goes way down, we can always reach out and make adjustments. So it's a "let's get started" contract is the way I would define it. And I think, working with Mr. Bennett, we know him personally from being the former city attorney, and he seems to be very reasonable in matters like this.
Thank you, Mr. Donovan. I appreciate that. Ms. Brown?
I see there's a $5,000 flat retainer, and then the $3,000 for mediation. Is that separate if we would need a mediation? Or is that included in the $5,000 per month?
No, that would be separate. And that would be for, you know, mediations, a due process, which are mostly things that special ed has requested of him in the past. So if there aren't any, there would be no $3,000 fee.
And how frequently do those kinds of situations generally arise in a regular school year?
I'd say about three or four a year.
And do you find that to be reasonable for a flat rate?
Yes. We basically, we have some experience on that. The last three or four we've done have been between probably $2,800 and $3,500. So I think $3,000 is reasonable.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, I'm not seeing any hands. So it sounds...
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Ms. Odin.
Problem without having a picture up. What part of the budget does that come out of, Mr. Donovan?
That will go to the legal expense line.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So it sounds like we are looking for a motion to approve the six-month contract with Wadley.
I've got a question here.
I'm so sorry, Ms. Johnson.
That's okay, your head was down.
Yeah, I was reading what I wrote down. Go ahead.
Mr. Donovan, how much money do we have in that line item? Or we're going to be moving money from another line item to this line item?
We have, I believe, $60,000 in that line item. But as the year goes on, since, assuming we're going to continue the agreement with Attorney Clausen, and if we continue this for more than six months, we will have to make a transfer into that line. But I think for the first six months, we can cover both.
I'm just writing this down, cover both. Well, we haven't decided anything with schools yet, but I guess I'm thinking ahead. Where would we get the money from six months down the line? Six... For the line item, we're talking December, January.
Yeah. And I think that I'll know more information by then. It could come from attrition. It might come from... I don't know off the top of my head, but I'm sure I could find an amount of $25,000 or $30,000.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay. Anybody else? No? Okay. I'm going to hold my paper up so I don't miss everybody. It looks like we're looking for a motion to approve a six-month contract with Wadley Starr &amp; Peters LLC at the amount of $5,000 per month. Is that correct, Mr. Donovan?
Correct.
Would anyone like to make that motion?
I just said so moved.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Timmons. And seconded by Ms. Gilio. Okay. I'm having like a delay, so I apologize. I'm not sure what's going on with my internet connection. Okay. Any other discussion? Seeing no hands. Mr. Guarino, when you're ready, could you please call the roll?
Okay. On the motion to approve the contract, Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Ziem has not joined us yet? Okay. Ms. Bishop?
Yeah.
Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Odin?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Okay. Thank you, everybody. The next item on our agenda is a grant donation. The National Collaborative for Digital Equity has made a generous donation of 60 Chromebooks to our district. And so the next item would be to decide if we want to accept that. Dr. Mosley, did you wish to speak to that?
I'm excited. I just wanted to say thank you so much to those individuals that donated. I can't express enough... You can't get enough Chromebooks. So I appreciate it. And I think we all appreciate it. And it's a generous donation. So thank you to all those individuals. We appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Mosley. So I would be looking for a motion to accept the donation of 60 Chromebooks from the National Collaborative for Digital Equity.
I move that we accept the donation from 60 Chromebooks from the National Association of Digital Equality. Did I get that right?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Odin. And then I saw a couple hands for a second.
I will second.
Mr. Guarino? All right. Does anyone have any comments? Okay. When you're ready, Mr. Guarino.
Hey. On the motion to approve the acceptance of 60 Chromebooks, Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yeah.
Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Odin?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Great. Thank you, everybody. And thank you so much to the National Collaborative for Digital Equity. We can use these Chromebooks like immediately to help with our summer school delivery. So thank you very much.
I would completely agree with you, Ms. Raymond.
So I'm really excited about this. This will help a lot of children. So the next item on our agenda is the personnel recommendations.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes. Go ahead, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you. I'd like to, at some point, even through email, I'd like to know how many Chromebooks we lent out, how many Chromebooks we got back, and the ones that we didn't get back, what is the district doing about getting them returned to us? Because I didn't like the answer that we'll just file with our insurance company. I don't think so because of the fact this is taxpayers' money and we need to get these Chromebooks back. People, if I remember correctly, signed an agreement. So I'd like to get an update on that with all the Chromebooks. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Johnson. I did have an email with Gregory Rodriguez, our IT director, just this week about the number of Chromebooks that were lent out. And he let me know that we lent out 1,770 Chromebooks. But I didn't ask him how many we got back. So if we could find that out... Does it make sense to do it now or after summer school?
I just, do we want to have an update on just the Chromebooks for the next meeting? Or is that a request that's coming through? Is I... My understanding is that what the... What's the thing?
Well, I... Not to speak for Ms. Johnson, but it sounded like she said either an email to the board or update it at the next meeting. I'm asking if it makes sense to do it now or if we should wait for summer school to end. And Ms. Johnson and Ms. Brown both have their hands up. Go ahead, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you, if I may interject.
And Mr. Guarino.
I'd like to know now, before summer school, because then we can find out how many students kept it for summer school after. But I want to make sure, and I guess I really want a whole report, how these Chromebooks were used. Were these... Did these students use them? Did they not? I mean, this is all going to play into this remote learning on how did our students fare with remote learning with these Chromebooks. And so I really want to know, we lent out 2,770. I want to know how many got back? How many are staying for summer school? And I really want to report how good did our students fare in the different schools throughout the community on this remote learning? I think it's very important that we know how our students did. So I'd appreciate that. I think it's a big... It might be a big report, but you know, we as a board have to report. And who do we report to? The parents and the community? Is all this working out? All this money being spent? All this remote learning? And did children learn? Because I've met many students that said they want to be back in school. Many parents have said to me, they never saw their teachers, special ed with issues. Several people approached me with special ed issues. So I'd like to know where the district stands on all this, you know? So I hope we'll get this pretty soon. And I don't think that this is any problem for anybody not to be able to give us this heads up because we are on board and we need to know this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. It's a fair question. I have Ms. Brown and then Mr. Guarino. I think I saw your hand as well.
Thank you, Ms. Raymond. I'd actually like to piggyback on Ms. Johnson's request for a report. If we could see with these additional 60 Chromebooks, and I think we had, and this may be incorrect, 700 already budgeted to purchase for next school year in the budget that we put forth, how close that puts us to getting, and with the return quote books, all of that technology in the hands of all the students in our district moving forward? If we're really thinking about any kind of modified hybrid model, I think it's going to be really important to have all students in our district an option to have access to a Chromebook if they choose to take one. And I think that's going to be a top priority. You know, first choice to be back in the classroom. But if we have to do a hybrid, I think, or an emergency closure, we need to make sure kids are getting the services and access to technology that they need. So I'd love to see how close we are to making that work. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Mr. Guarino?
Thank you, Madam President. I believe Mr. Norris has joined us. I just wanted to make that... Say that for the record.
Good evening.
I do remember during the budget, I think it was during the Budget Committee, that our new IT director gave us a report on Chromebooks and how many Chromebooks we had and his schedule for replacement. So the members of this board should know how many Chromebooks we have. It's... I know we have a lot of information. It's in a big binder, but that information was given to us. The other thing that we should know is that that our... We do not have enough Chromebooks for every student and that families were doubling up if they had more than one student. We've been told that by administration many times, that there are some families that have difficulties. If they only... If they have two or three kids and they have no Chromebooks, then they got one, probably got one Chromebook from from the district, which kind of made it hard on them. So we were told that already. And so the other thing is about remote learning and how effective it was. I think it's kind of a separate... Well, it's not really a separate issue because they are both intertwined because some families were probably better at it than others if they had more resources. But we have a committee with a lot of subcommittees. And I'm assuming that... I know that there's not a lot of time, but we're going to make a plan for getting getting back on track in the fall. And how effective we were at remote learning, I would assume is going to come out with those committees. So we've been... This board should know already that this information is going to be forthcoming, that we have a committee that's working on remote learning. So I'm assuming that they're going to tell us how things went and so that they could be better prepared in the fall if we have to do remote learning. So I think that information is going to come. So I don't think we need any special, you know, investigations or anything like that. I think we just have to be patient and listen. I think a big part of our job on this board is to listen to administration. But we have a lot of this information already. And so the other thing is if we don't get our... I think the administration might need some direction for us. What can we do to families if we try to collect these Chromebooks and we haven't been able to collect some of the Chromebooks from the families and they kind of lost touch? And I think maybe administration can get direction from some of the... Some of the members of this board. What should we do to families? Should we punish them? Or should we, you know, get the police after them? What is the... What is the thinking on the part? I know it costs money, but what are we supposed to do to collect these Chromebooks from the students? Thank you.
Sorry, I was muted. Thank you, Mr. Guarino. Ms... Hold on. Dr. Mosley, I saw his hand first. And then I saw Ms. Johnson. Did I miss anybody else? No? Okay. Thank you for giving me a second to get my brain back together. Go ahead, Dr. Mosley.
Some of the kids, we can certainly get some numbers on how many kids did not, I say, return the Chromebooks. I think it was mentioned earlier that some of our kids are actually in summer school. And as a result, we did not have them return the Chromebooks to us. We have them actually keep them for that. Some of our students who are in special education actually kept their Chromebooks so that they could continue their summer school programming. Any parent that has a concern around services or Chromebooks or anything like that, we encourage them to reach out to the building principal. Or if it's special ed, Marsha Bagley, they can certainly be able to address those concerns. Some of the questions that are being broached in terms of an autopsy of how the remote learning took place, I think we're going to see some of that when we're talking about reopening. For instance, our surveys that we generated spoke to a lot of that, those questions that were broached. Also too, how many Chromebooks we're going to need? It really all depends on what model we select. So really, what we do Model 1, going back to school, then it's going to be business as usual, so to speak. If we do a hybrid model, then Greg and his team or whoever was on that subgroup can certainly speak to the number of Chromebooks. And if it's remote learning, depending on what lens we want, if it's every student that has a Chromebook in the district, I think there were some preliminary numbers that were given out, I think about two meetings ago. I think it was about $800,000-ish to do that. We certainly would be able to provide that information to the board. There's a lot of moving parts within the next month. We're looking forward to it. Sharon, please jump in. When we present to the board just an update, I think it's coming within the next week or two around what that remote learning feels like. Not just with the Chromebooks, but also connectivity, also with the curriculum, also with planned ops. So there's a lot that's at stake here.
The subgroups are already meeting and a lot of the discussion is coming, is going through their groups. Hasn't actually come up to our level yet because they need some time to answer the questions. But we should be checking in with them, I think, probably within the next two weeks. And so we'll have more to share at that point.
I do have on the calendar for Monday, July 13, a work session regarding the task force where there's going to be a preliminary presentation to the board about, you know, checking in and what they've discovered so far. So hopefully, everybody's still on track for that. Ms. Johnson, are you able to wait on the information from the Chromebooks for that July 13 meeting? Do you think it will be ready, Dr. Mosley, at that point?
I can get to the information. I have a couple of... The information that's being asked is fairly straightforward. I mean, we can get it to you. I think how many Chromebooks we need to move forward for next year is all contingent on the model we select.
It sounds like Ms. Brown's question though was, were we to do a one-to-one model? How many do we need? I was asked that question today by NPR and I was like, I don't know. And I tried to find it in our minutes this afternoon and I couldn't. But that, it doesn't mean it's not there.
I can get you that number. I think when we... Again, this is hypothetical. I think it's... I think it was like $800,000. I think that was broached at one point or another. You know, it's... I don't want to say it's easy to order, I'm just making, 11,000 Chromebooks.
Right.
Ordering that's easy. How do you manage that? What's the manpower? How do you do help desks? It's not just a help desk in terms of, say, you know, sending an email. You have to set up help desks throughout the city, which means that if we go that route, then we have to build a human capital infrastructure to address students' needs. For instance, Lowell did something like, very similar to what's being discussed right here. But all throughout the city of Lowell, they set up help desks for families to come and to just get help. Some of our families don't know how to... I don't mean to turn on a computer, but they're not computer savvy in terms of just how to manipulate and use Google Classroom. Or finally, we also would have to hire and set up an infrastructure for our ELL families that also struggle because of there's a language barrier there. So it's, I would say it's... I'm just making up a number. It would be $800,000 plus other expenses too, to help our families troubleshoot as well. So it's, you know, we can certainly give you the number in terms of the... Ideally, if we ordered, I'm making up a number. I don't... 10,000 Chromebooks. But there's also other variables that we have to consider.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson and then Ms. Brown?
Thank you. Okay. The one I basically asked for and what I'd like... It is great to the 13th meeting when we've got a kind of a picture of everything. A number of students that did not return the Chromebooks. I'd like to know the number of students that are in summer school and special ed out of that number. Because if they're in summer school, special ed, they don't have a problem with that because they've got the Chromebooks in hand. But my concern is, and I didn't see a copy of the contract and it goes by what Mr. Guarino has mentioned, what are we going to do? I'm not going to send the police out. The police have better things to do and to go and demand a Chromebook. But I don't know what the contract states. There was a contract that was signed. And so the board probably needs to see what the contract reads because it's a legal binding contract. So I would like to, I guess, maybe get a copy of that contract at parent, you know, just a blank contract. Also, and with that, with the remote learning, I mean, we know that the kids that passed, the kids that failed, and the kids that didn't meet the competent level. So I mean, this is everything that has to be considered and the committees. But I'm just kind of curious for my own viewpoint is how did they fare without a committee? So when the committee gives a report, I have an understanding where we're going with all this and how well remote learning really did in the district. So I don't... I mean, I'm sure you have the data on what happened at the end of the year with these students. And I think the board needs to see this outside of the committee because we, again, we have a duty and obligation to make sure what we did during this period of time when the school was shut down, did we even do it right? Did the kids learn? Did the kids not learn? And I'd like to know all this. And it's not a... I don't think it's a lot to ask because... Oh, my God. Thunderstorms. Excuse me, my cat just go right out of the window. I don't know if anybody saw it.
I did. I did. Is she all right, poor thing?
She's okay. Oh my God. So, but, um, that's all I'm asking for, for my own peace of mind, my own knowledge. So I, and everything's come from the committee, I get that understanding. I'm going to myself a video off just to make sure the cat's okay. Excuse me. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Johnson. I really hope she's all right. Um, it sounds like a lot of those answers will be, um, addressed by the task force, um, but I'm glad that Dr. Mosley now has a better understanding of, um, what Ms. Johnson is thinking. Uh, Ms. Brown, did you have something to add?
My, mine was just a comment, um, that Dr. Mosley hit the nail on the head. Uh, I think there's going to be a lot of logistics involved in making sure we get the right technology into the hands of kids. Um, I know that, uh, Mr. Rodriguez is, will have a big job ahead of him and his staff, making sure that they have, um, all of the security updated and everything on the computers as they go out. So I just think it's great that we're getting ahead of it and thinking about it and talking about it now because we don't want to be doing it on, you know, August 10. Thanks.
Yeah. All right, thank you, Ms. Brown. And I I believe we had discussed, hold on a moment, Mr. Gao. Um, I believe we had discussed perhaps having another budget meeting after that task force update um, to see if our budget needs to be aligned with some of the recommendations of the task force. Um, or if we have enough information at that point or if we have to wait until the second task force, um, recommendation. So, um, so hopefully there's a lot of moving parts, but hopefully we can get this lined up this summer. Um, Mr. Gao?
Great, thank you, Ms. Raymond. Um, regarding like the additional manpower, that totally makes sense, like a lot of logistics, a lot of administrative things that have to come with purchasing, managing like $800,000 worth of, um, Chromebooks. Um, I just wanted to offer though, like in terms of the help desks or like in terms of some of the technical troubleshooting, if it helps at all, I know that the National Honor Societies at North and South, um, there, a lot of the students are looking for more volunteer, especially during this time, it's, it's, you know, as as kind of weird as it seems, it's kind of difficult sometimes to find volunteer towers during this time. So I mean, I I know that maybe employing like a peer to peer model on that, I know a lot of people would definitely be interested in doing that. So I know we're not there quite yet, but if we do get there, I'd be happy to help set anything up in terms of that.
That's a really interesting idea. Um, thank you for bringing that forward. That's something that I don't know that we would have thought of on our own. So thanks a lot for that. Okay, um, any other commentary on the grant or Chromebooks? Okay, um, seeing nobody jumping up at that, um, we now have our personnel recommendations. And these are pretty timely. Um, Ms. Timmons or Ms. O'Gara, did you want to speak to these?
No.
No, we just need to approve them.
Hi, uh, Mr. Donovan's waving his hand as well.
Did you actually vote to approve the Chromebooks they needed?
We didn't do that.
Yes, we, we did. It passed eight to zero.
I thought it was a contract approval.
No, so the 60 Chromebooks, accepting them was, uh, the motion was made by Ms. Odin. It was seconded by Mr. Guarino and it passed eight to zero. Okay.
I don't remember voting on it. Okay.
Am I, am I wrong, Tara? Were you paying attention to that?
Correct.
Okay. Sometimes I think I like anticipate notes. I don't know. Okay, so personnel recommendations, um, Ms. Timmons, would you like to make the motion?
Like, I like to, uh, make a motion to approve personnel recommendation dated July 1st, 2020.
Okay. Seconded by me? Okay. Okay, um, uh, Mr. Guarino, could you please call the roll?
On the motion to approve, um, the, uh, personnel recommendations, Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Um, Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Julio?
I don't see her. I wonder if the storm knocked her out.
Okay, uh, Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Odin?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Oh.
And I think Ms. Julio is coming on, joining us, rejoining us right now.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I got, um, cut off and I'm back.
Do you want to approve the personnel records, uh, personnel recommendations, rather?
Oh, is there a motion?
There was. We, we just voted, but just this second, which.
Okay, yes, I do. I absolutely do.
Okay, the motion carries eight to zero.
Zero. Thank you, Ms. Gilio.
All right.
Okay, so, um, the next two items on our agenda are in non-public. Uh, does anyone anticipate that we will need, um, a motion after we come out of non-public? I'm not seeing any faces that say yes. So in that case, I think what we will do is do a motion to go into non-public um, under, uh, 91A3 um, A and E. And then, um, when we come out, we will just end the meeting. We won't have any motions.
We're, we're going to have a motion to, uh, seal the minutes?
Yeah, to seal the minutes, but no, we won't be voting on any contracts or anything this evening.
Okay.
Um, so. All right, um, so I'm looking for a motion to go into non-public under RSA 91A32A and E. Unless, right, with by Ms. Johnson?
I will second.
Seconded by Mr. Guarino. Um, and so, um, so that means that, um, we have to say good evening to, uh, Mr. Gao and Mr. Norris, um, once we take the vote. So, okay, when you're ready for the roll, Mr. Guarino?
Okay, on the motion to go into non-public, Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Julio?
Yes.
Um, Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Odin?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Okay, so we are in, um, non-public as of 6:08 PM.